Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Council of the City of Connorsville. We'll be getting underway shortly, but before we do, we will have a pledge of allegiance by myself and the invocation by our Assistant Chief Reverend Dennis Perkins. So let's stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful evening. Lord, we thank you for your guidance and your direction. Lord, we pray that you keep your hand upon us as we begin the business of the city. Touch each council member, Lord. Bless them and guide them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the regular meeting of the common council of the City of Connorsville, Indiana is now in session. Please turn your cellphones off or put them on silence. Thank you. We welcome everybody, our viewers on TV3, and the folks that have joined us here in the council chambers for tonight's meeting. We had the reading of the minutes of the March 2nd, 2015, regular meeting. Any additions or corrections? Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion. We pass them as presented.
Second. Thank you. We've had a motion, a second, that we accept the minutes as presented for the meeting of March 2nd, 2015. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? The minutes are accepted. Real call, please. Clerk Treasurer?
Councilwoman Rish?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Shomel?
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby?
Present.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Seiler?
Present.
Under New Business Resolution 2015-11 is amending a final tax abatement for residential real property. Is there anyone here to speak to this resolution tonight?
No, I don't think. Diana didn't think it was really...
Did you want to explain what it is?
It's just kind of a cleanup ordinance. I think when they originally did this, they left a section off of there that should have been on there.
It was only one lot, actually.
One lot, wasn't it?
Yeah. Diana inadvertently left Lot 49 off in the fourth whereas.
But at least we get it.
This is the best way to cure it, I think. It's just doing amended resolution.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right, thank you. We had a motion and a second that we approve. Amended Resolution 2015-11. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Resolution passed. Resolution 2015-12 is police and cable reimbursement. Julie, do you have that?
Yeah, but they're just, the police is telephone on both of those resolutions. There's two resolutions. And one is police telephone and cable. I don't remember what $30 is. Do you remember, John? $30 reimbursement? What was that for?
Right around that.
What was it for? Do you remember?
The hospital.
Oh, yeah. Your phone. And EMS was for uniforms.
Okay, you've heard the two resolutions. We use 2015-12 and 2015-13, or, yes, 12 and 13. What's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion. We accept.
Second.
In favor of approving Resolutions 2015-12 and 2015-13, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Resolution is approved. Pending Ordinance 3182, deletion of a handicapped parking space approved of 829 Grand Avenue. Chief of Police, you want to address this?
This handicap sign in front of this address, people who live there don't live there anymore, and it's a vacant house, and so we would like to take that handicap sign down and do away with the ordinance.
It was approved earlier today by the Board of Works.
Yes, it was. Before work.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President, I'm moved to accept Penninghurst 3182.
Second.
For passage on first reading, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You passed out a first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and move to third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules for pending ordinance 3182, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? We'll move on to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second for the passage on third reading of Ordinance 3182, deletion of a handicapped parking space in front of 829 Grand Avenue. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Pending Ordinance 3182 becomes Ordinance 6242 and is now part of the traffic code. Okay, departmental reports for the month of February. The airport representative is not here. EDG Director Dan Barker.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Just to bring you up to speed, we've had new officers in the Economic Development Group. Craig Howell is now the new chairman. Pete Barrows is the vice chair. Melissa Matney as treasurer and Richie Ware as secretary. I'd like to know that. Also, we have completed two of the four academies for Connorsville and Fayette County to become an ACT work-ready community. You will recall this initiative helps Connorsville and Fayette County citizens prepare for better jobs through testing remediation and employer involvement. It helps the city of Connorsville and Fayette County workforce close the skills gap. We are currently involved in building a new economic development website, which will give Connorsville and the county greater exposure to state and national, international business opportunities. We expect that to be done within the next month, month and a half. By the way, that's being done by a group that does only economic development websites, and we are very fortunate to also receive a grant from Duke Energy to help us pay for the cost, over half the cost of this project. There's also a project that's running hand-in-hand with the new website that will allow us to create a new look and feel for EDG. There'll be a new overall design for our logo, slogan, new marketing material. It'll make us look a little more professional and a little more polished as we present Connorsville, the Connorsville and Fayette County story, and opportunity with the different sales trips, private meetings with site selectors, and group activities with finance companies, land management companies, and investment firms. We really feel that this is important, and we're in the process of doing that. We're nearly finished with a new EDG strategic plan that will help us set and accomplish important goals that will help all the citizens of Connorsville and Fayette County throughout 2015 and beyond. And I think you're aware, this will be old news for you, but I'm going to mention it anyway. There's a Chinese national has made an offer on the 48 property to continue his Chinese-based art and craft distribution business here in Fayette County contingent upon rezoning. And thankfully, the commissioners did grant the general business zoning so that this sale can take place, and this will allow the transaction and business to move forward, and it'll also put the 48 on the tax rolls and provide some jobs for Connorsville and Fayette County. Then the last one, and I was, I mentioned this in the paper, that I did not have a lot to do with this. In fact, this company came to town really without any help from anyone. They just kind of snuck in under the radar. And this is a California-based company called Cold Water Mediation Group, and they're right across the street from City Hall. And they plan to employ 30 to 50 people, and they'll be paying minimum wage up to $20 per hour. And they plan to be up and running here in just a very short time. And they're going to do their hiring right out of that office. So that's my report to you this evening. Is there any questions from the council for me?
When might your website be open and be up and active?
Say it again.
Your website, when might it be?
About a month and a half.
Okay.
Do you know where we are in progress with the windmills?
Yes, I do. We are about three-quarters of the way home, Gabe. We have, the only thing outstanding is with the APC, the special exception land use agreements that will come through the APC, and I don't know that that's on the docket yet, but it will probably come up in the April to May timeframe.
I think it's on the April agenda.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
On the 48 property, is there anything yet to be done?
Well, I received a call from the lady, Nice Gal, an old classmate of mine who has been representing Peter Wang, that's the Chinese national, and they're going through with the transaction. So he has been anxious to get this going because he feels every month he's not in business, he loses money here in the U.S. So we're anxious for him to get going, bring some American, you know, some jobs back here from China and some American dollars here. We're just enthused. Our hope is that this will open the door for other businesses that will originate from China to come to our area. Jobs are jobs, and we want one. So we're hopeful that this will spark something pretty good. We've got a lot of friends that are in this particular type of business, and they're all interested in having something central in the United States. And so we're in the process of trying to make things happen.
Good.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Dan. Transfer station, Tom Creach?
Yes. Mr. President, you have, the council has my report. Do you have any questions?
I see down is the...
Recycling?
Thirty-one tons, yes, to recycle.
That was weather.
Weather, I would think so.
It's all weather-related, yeah.
Yeah.
That's down about nine tons. You'll catch up.
Yeah. Any questions for Tom, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Tipton, Department Chief. Troy?
Evening.
Evening.
We had 101 runs, 151 hours on emergencies, five inspections, seven investigations, six hours on pre-planning, 61 hours on training, $5,000 in damages. Captain Chris Gettinger works on our, we send out a letter during our fundraising for, we send out books to our schools for fire prevention. That goes on in January, February, so he's been taking care of that. Inspections, the fire marshal was in from the state. We wrote up a couple of businesses, and I gave some verbal warnings in the last couple of weeks. So that's been going on. And we're working with a couple of industries on teaching some fire industry classes. So that's been going on right now.
What were your contractual services, $3,600?
$3,600.
You recall what it was?
It's in part of your report for the show.
I see. Somewhere.
We had our firehouse software on there for...
It's contractual services.
And we had some SCBA bottle testing that continued into it. Ran.
Okay.
And it looks like the big one was our firehouse software.
Mm-hmm.
And then we had the boiler.
You had to repair your furnace and station one.
Yeah.
It was $1,000.
The big ones was the boiler and the firehouse.
Yes. Okay, cost of running your department last month, $177,357.20. Any questions for Troy, anyone?
Thank you, Troy.
Okay, Dale Munson, EMS Commander. Dale isn't available tonight, so let's see if we can, what is the, the parts want to come up and talk? Let me give you the EMS right quick, so we keep straight, okay? Okay, EMS total, $82,660.81, and the city share was 50% of that, $41,330.41. Total runs were 174. EMS one put 895 miles on it. EMS two, 244. And EMS three went a mile, I don't know where they went, in the commander's car, 219. Total runs to date, 368 by EMS. Okay, go ahead. Parked out.
All right. Our revenue for the month was $11,924. Our expenditures were $40,660.88. Our youth soccer signups ended Friday, but we still are taking some of the late people. So we have to sign up. Please get in there as soon as possible.
How many have signed up? Do you have any idea how many signed up?
I think we're at around 250 right now, so we still have some people who need to sign up, but...
Is that up or down?
It's down a little bit, but last year, I think, at Dubline, we had 189, and we hit up with like 300. So it doesn't really account for anything. We're still taking T-ball and softball signups until April 10th, and we have the Easter egg hunt at the park down April 2nd at 6:00 p.m.
Is that a Wednesday?
No, it's a Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Police Ordinance Enforcing. Chief David, Counselor, David?
We had 1,297 water reports, 11 citations issued, zero ordinance violations, 17 warnings, three personal injury accidents, 43 property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and we have 74 arrests made. And again, questions on my budget? I will be glad to try to answer them. Go ahead.
Dave?
Yes?
We only had $620 in overtime?
Pardon?
We only had $620 in overtime?
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good. Total amount for operating your department last month, $188,489.68. The gasoline, I know, is out of whack, but it balances out apparently. I mean, it went from 2,700 in January to 6,700, 6,800 in February.
Sometimes it's a feeling.
Sometimes it falls over from last year, too, so...
Okay. Any questions for David? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Street Department, David Jove, is he, yes?
Good evening, one and all.
Evening.
As you can see, the normal things we did this last month, but a few little things. We had some calls today about yard waste. Let's see about getting that scheduled with Tom and all, and the first nice day, everybody wants to do something today, so we'll get that taken care of and put it on the schedule for Mondays. I don't know exactly what day we'll start, but that's what we'll do. Another thing, we got the street sweeper going today. Phil took it out for a test run, and we did a few streets, and it worked, and we'll see how we do tomorrow with it. But it didn't take long to fill a truck up. There's a lot of outturns, you know, to pick up.
Yes.
And we've got that going, so that's a good thing. Something for you to all know, I have not even told Julie, but I met my quota on salt for the winter, so I went ahead and purchased what we had to purchase, and I kept it back 100 ton more than what we asked for. So we saved, we didn't use 100 ton, so I didn't have to buy it. I had to get 400 ton, which I had to pay for whether I got it or not, so I didn't need all that, but I got it in Barnes full for next fall.
Good.
So that's a plus then for next fall, but I didn't go ahead and get the other 100 ton, so we didn't need it. And I just save, this is savings that I didn't see any reason to pay for that, so...
You replaced and repaired a lot of signs, I see.
Yeah, that's just ongoing. It's unbelievable how people hit signs. It's just, it never stops either. They knock it down, as Dave knows, the stop sign, actually, the whole stop sign here at the post office a couple, three weeks ago, and they knocked it down. Hopefully, with, we do get some reports and turn some of the insurance, we try to recoup a little bit of money that way.
But you can make these at the street department, these signs?
Most of them, yeah.
Okay.
What we do is, it's a lot cheaper. We reface, instead of getting a new sign, we'll take an old sign, buy a face for it, put the new face on it. It looks like brand new. The metal doesn't go away. It's an aluminum-type material, so it doesn't rust. We put a new face on it, and that saves a lot of money, so you don't have to buy the old piece.
Cost of operating your department last month, $112,089.60. Any questions for David in the street department?
I think we're all glad the street department, the snow might be over, so...
Don't say that to them.
I said, "might."
Thank you.
You never know.
Utility Department, Mike Bottomless or Brad Fuller, coming forward.
Hello.
Hello.
We've got our report, some of the highlights. The Grand Avenue project started back up to the end of the day, of course, so I think people will be really surprised how quick that'll all come together. It's supposed to be done by June 30th, and I think in the next month, you'll really start to see that happen.
That's the 21st to 23rd portion?
No, we're at the Grand Avenue part, and then the F project, we call it, which is 21st Street, starts in about two weeks.
Mm-hmm. And that area again is?
21st Street from Grand Western and then a half-block of Iowa and Vermont.
Okay. And you'll be replacing sewers?
Storm separation, we'll put in a catch basin and storm drain there.
Okay.
Yeah. So that'll start in April, and you'll hear more about that. We're going to probably just knock on doors and tell people and warn them before.
What again is the estimated cost of that, do you recall?
Oh, three, about with the design and everything, about $400,000.
Okay.
But it was going to be seven. We cut it way back. Like that? Yeah, we cut it way back, and it was supposed to be the whole street, and we just cut it to do what we had to do. And Mike attended a mosquito workshop. Thought we were talking about that.
He's certified in that, you know.
So he's not a friend of the mosquitoes, apparently?
I don't think so. And you saw the fine balance, you had asked about the water, Brian, maybe he...
Yes, I saw, yes, we heard that today. Thank you. I'm glad it increased a bit.
I think that's it, unless anybody's got anything. That's it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Bill.
City TV's John Bowden.
From February, we had 12 hours, 10 minutes production of readings, 8 hours, 41 minutes original programming, and we, of course, now have wrapped up basketball season, which Frank will tell you about.
We're ready to start again, anytime.
Yes, Frank. And then we have two new programs that we've been working on. They just premiered this week. One is Hope Happenings, and that's a monthly program that will be presented by the Hope Center, talking about what they're doing monthly, and we can do an update, and that airs weekdays at 6:30 p.m., Monday through Wednesday at 10:00 p.m. And then we also have a new show called Girl Talk, which did start airing today, and it airs at 11:30 a.m. weekdays, and it's just some local ladies talking about whatever comes to mind. So I encourage you to watch that. It might be a little humorous.
It's not like The View, is it?
It might be.
That's scary.
I try to rein them in, but it'll be entertaining. Any questions?
John?
You going to tell us who stars in that?
Well, the host is Charity Moore, and she had previously actually done the Health Talk for us, so she wanted to continue to do something and came up with this idea, and so she's drafting ladies in, and they'll be adding more and changing around and things, so I'm glad it'll be very interesting.
John, I asked you earlier, are you still planning on having a meet the candidates or interview with them sometime in April, or have you got?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll actually be doing that towards the end of the month, and we'll...
End of March or April?
The end of March. We haven't said an exact date, but it'll be coming up pretty soon. And that'll give a chance for any of the candidates that are in contested races, that will be part of that.
Okay.
It's a standard debate-type format, but relaxed format, so...
Okay, thank you.
But yes, that will be coming up, so...
Okay, any more questions for John? Thank you, John. Good report. Okay, before we proceed to the other agenda categories, Donna Schroeder is here, and Donna, do you want to address Melinda, Melinda Bunzendall, being appointed to the tourism board?
I can do that.
Yeah, come forward, please. So the mayor appointment, I believe, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And we've learned that Leonard has appointed Melinda Bunzendall, which is right there. And also, next to her is Amanda Stevens. Amanda is the secretary of the tourism board. She's the manager at Woodridge, and so these nice people are always available to help us. One thing I wanted to say, we're pleased to have Amanda, or Melinda, appointed. We also have Amanda. Jenny Bedore is our treasurer, and another member is Kelly Robinson. So now we have a nice rounded number of board members, I think, as far as different areas. We have somebody from Campground, the motel. I'm, of course, historic Connorsville, and so, and Melinda is, for those of you who know about Connorsville Neighborhood Day or Revive the Ville, Melinda has had a very big part in that as far as a lot of volunteer things that have been done around the city in the past few months. Just things like cleaning up, I don't know if you noticed, but Fifth Street Hill, the steps look pretty good, and that was her. The bridge got cleaned up on Fifth Street. She came over and helped us. She and her group came and helped us clean up at New Kirk when we were going to have the second Sunday, you know, on memory lane there. So I think we have a nice, well-rounded board now. What we'd like for everybody to know is that on April the 19th, we will be holding in the courtroom at the courthouse at 3:00 p.m. a meeting for absolutely anyone who's interested. We're, of course, going to target the not-for-profits because those are the folks that are eligible to get grants from tourism. If you don't know where the money comes from, it's the inkeepers' tax that was levied by the county in 2002, and it's a tax on all the camping and the hotel rooms in the county. And so that's where we get our funding. We're going to try our best to utilize that money wisely and disperse our advertising. So anyway, this is an open invitation to anybody who'd like to be at that. Hopefully, we'll have the Canal House open that afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00 prior to the meeting, so if you'd like to go in there and look around, if you haven't been there. I'm sure the folks will be at the train station, if you'd like to look around there. April 12th is the season opening of Fayette County Historical Museum. Anybody who would like to come down and re-up your membership, we're having ice cream Sundays on Sunday, so come down to an ice cream social and visit with us and see what's there. And again, welcome to Melinda, and thanks to Amanda for being on board, and thank you for giving us your time. for giving us your time.
Is this a city or a county board?
This is a county board.
A county board, okay.
However, the mayor has three appointments, and the commissioners have two.
Okay.
Because of the population. And so we kind of belong to you guys, too.
Do you have a budget that's reviewed by the county, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's not much, and that's why other counties have paid directors, and you have us.
All right, thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
We welcome your members, thank you. Okay, old business, any old business to come before the council tonight?
Frank?
Sir?
Something I want to put out.
Sure, chief.
For everybody out there in TV world, and also to the newspaper, I'm getting a lot of complaints of our trash bins being left out into the streets, they get blown over or whatever, they don't come and put them back on their property. I'm getting a numerous one, especially ones that are streets that don't have any sidewalks.
Yes.
They put them out in the street, and they don't, it's getting them to be a little anonymous, so I just wanted to put out that they need to kind of keep them things put up in their yards. If they don't, I believe there's an ordinance someplace that they could be cited on, and I don't want to write anybody for something like that. I'd just rather either warning and just take care of their trash bins. But dare we be so kind to put something in the paper about that, please? I sure appreciate it. Now, another thing is, of course, it's summer, spring's coming, summer's on the way, grass is going to be growing, weeds are growing, of course, we're getting back into dilapidated houses and all this. Have some patience, and if they have any problems with a house or trash or something like this, to call the chief's office, myself and Dennis will go out ourselves and deal with it, or we'll assign somebody to, so that's all I need to put out.
Again, the trash, ordinance says you can only put out 24 hours before the day.
Something like that, I have to go to it and look, but, and we really haven't had any problem with people putting their bins out with trash, other than they got to make sure all the stuff's in that container, don't put it out to side, because that guy's not going to pick them up, is he? So they just need to take care of their container, and like I said, don't leave none out on the side, because they won't get picked up. And if it stays there past that point and everything else, then they could decide for that, too. With the times are and everything else, I hate to be a burden on anybody's finances or anything on things that are overlooked like that, so we'll see if we can get them taken care of, okay?
Okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Might bring the council up to date, the Board of Works today, there was a resolution regarding a notice of arbitration. This had to do with the Connersville firefighters, Local 2205. They had presented the city with a notice of arbitration for consideration, and we voted that they should move forward with said arbitration at this time. And also, we had a resolution that was concern three retired utility employees. Their attorney had made demands for certain benefits concerning their retirement, and the Board of Public Works and Safety refused to grant the benefits, and we denied their demands, so I just wanted to bring you up to date on those two events that happened today at the Board of Works. And of course, we're all aware of the emergency that we put into effect a year ago about this time, because, just to bring you up to date, for 2014-07 resolution declaring a financial emergency in the city of Connerville, Indiana, whereas the city clerk treasurer has advised the common council that as of March 1st, 2014, the general fund was under $1 million, and that the city will not have sufficient funds to meet payroll and pay claims beyond April 30th of 2014, based on current claim and payroll estimates. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Connerville that a financial emergency exists, and the common council of the city of Connerville authorizes the mayor and clerk treasurer to take whatever measures deemed expedient to alleviate the emergency to the greatest possible extent, including elimination of overtime pay and other measures. That's what we approved a year ago. Seems to be working, and of course, the firemen were requesting that we get 100% of their clothing allowance, we gave them 25%. That was the reason for the resolution concerning them today. But it is working. I mean, as I mentioned today, we had two choices a year ago, to either make layoffs or to eliminate overtime and clothing allowances, and we chose the latter, and that seemed to correct the problem. But we feel today that action by the firemen, if we'd have granted that, it would have possibly led to other things and put in jeopardy our financial planning position. Any comments from any of the council folks?
Was it three people from the waterworks?
Yes.
Do you mind saying who they are?
No, not at all. David Nutty, Mary Ellen Blanton, and Karen Lower.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else concerning the action by the Board of Works today? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous business. Anything under miscellaneous business? Okay, public forum. Anyone like to address the council on the issue? This is the time to do it. If you'd like to come forward.
I don't know whether this has anything to do, but I just want to, Grace United Methodist on 29th Street gave a good donation to the storm.
Okay.
Their storm program.
Okay, okay.
Thank them for it.
Thank you, Ruby. Tom, you have anything?
No, sir, do not.
Debbie, how about you?
Just saying the NCAA tournament's going to be a good one with five Indiana teams in it.
You filled out your bracket?
No.
Okay, okay. Gabe, how about you? What do you have for us? Okay?
I'm fine.
Gary, you okay? And are you okay? Everybody's okay, that's all the business we have scheduled, nothing else to come before us. Would someone like to say adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Always in favor of adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Making the adjourn.